...are aware of all of our needs here in Cameron County. Lord, we don't need fences to protect our border. We need you. Lord, we don't need Commissioner Benavides laying on his back at home ill because of lack of good blood circulation because we know that you're our supreme doctor. So I ask you please to touch Commissioner Benavides. Get him back in circulation for we need him. Lord, for all the needs of the young people, I see several young people here today. They're out of school. And I pray, Lord, for safety, safety on our streets, safety in our homes, safety in our parks and beaches. Lord, we pray for all of the needs of all of our citizenry here in Cameron County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public comment and Álvaro Sosa has signed up. Álvaro?
My name is Álvaro Sosa and I'm a member of the Movement of the Valley for the Rights Humanos. We're here today, my companions and I, with the intent of asking you to approve a resolution against the militarization of the border. Why? Because on 24th of January of 1997, an immigrant with the name Cesario Vázquez was shot by a group of soldiers of the Special Forces of the United States of America. 11 shots were directed at Cesario, resulting in a head-on impact as he was running away to seek refuge. Cesario managed to survive and is accused of attempted suicide against a federal official. According to the report, Cesario was first shot. However, he was sentenced to a minor offense and was sent to prison for six years. This is considered a violation of the individual requirements of Cesario and even of the North American Constitution of the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Álvaro. Humberto Pablo Hernández.
Good morning. My name is Humberto Hernández. I'm a member of the Movement of the Rights Humanos in the Valley. And we're here together because we think that you approve a resolution against the militarization of our borders. Because we don't want to let what happened on 20th of May of 1997 happen. Where Cillian Hernández Jr., a young American of the United States of America who was only 18 years old, was killed by a North American soldier with a M16 rifle,死去 by a soldier disguised as a sniper, only 100 meters from his house, in a mission of surveillance and support for the frontier troops. That's why we're here, because we don't want to let what happened on 20th of May of 1997 happen. Because we don't want another person to die for another error by another soldier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Good morning. Good morning, gentlemen.
Your name, please?
My name is Frayn Candanosa. I'm Frayn Candanosa. I'm a member of the Movement of the Valley for the Rights Humanos. We're here today because we think that you approve a resolution against the militarization of our borders. Why? Because it would increase the fear in our community and it would create a war zone. It would increase violence on the border and it could cause more deaths because the soldiers are trained to kill and not to supervise. It could be a violation of the Comitatus Act in a act of the content of the Constitution of the United States of America, which says that the armed forces cannot act as local authorities and supervise within the United States of America. They are doing everything possible to prevent immigrants from entering this country as if we were enemies to them. But they really are our neighbors and they deserve to live a better life if they're in the United States of America because they come to work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One more. Frayn Candanosa. Maria Victoria Candanosa.
Good morning. My name is Maria Victoria Candanosa. I'm a member of the Movement for the Rights Humanos. I'm here to ask your support and grant a permanent residence for immigrants, immigrants and their families. We want a legal assurance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Those are all of them? I can't see them. The names of the organizations are... What's the name of the organization? What's the name of the organization?
Movement of the Valley for the Rights Humanos.
Okay. Right there. Movement of the Valley for the Rights Humanos. Okay. Much thanks. I can't comment on the law because it's not on the agenda, right? What they've said. But I do want to say that we appreciate that you're here and that you represent part of the community, that you represent us. It's important in the United States of America that citizens or residents of this country hear and have the opportunity to speak and express themselves in the issues that affect us all here, not just in the Valley of the River Grande, but in all the states of the United States of America. It's a right that we have, not just as citizens, but as American citizens or residents of the United States of America. And it's very important that you continue to put your efforts to express yourself to your elected officials at all levels. You're welcome here in this court that is being held. You're a member of this court. You're a representative of this court. And it's important that you do your efforts because when the people speak, it's when the officials hear. But when they don't speak, it's when they do what they want to do. And many times what they want to do isn't in the best interest of the community. So I think what you're doing is something very good and very important. And I thank you very much for being here today. And it's been heard what they've proposed and we'll go over it from the part of the commission that we're going to make against the position that you're proposing. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you're going to tell us about all of this, I'd like to know what you're proposing. Okay. Great.
Judge, good morning, commissioners. My name is Joe Alexandria. I'm the former mayor of Raymondville. And today I came by to inform you of why I'm here. Telcom has a study that can be made for you as a county that can save you some money on your telecommunications, your telephone systems. Not to sell you anything, but to save you. And when I introduced him to Willacy County, I was amazed that in a small county that we have over there, he saved them over $20,000 a year. So I said, you know what? We need to go see my friend, the judge, and the commissioners from Cameron County so that you can come by and let them know what you can do for them. He is a professional, so I'm just here to introduce him. And Randall Hall, you want to let them know what you do?
Thank you for the opportunity, Judge and commissioners. I came before you this morning seeking an opportunity to assist Cameron County in investigating ways to reduce its annual Telcom spend by researching and documenting ways that that can be done. I can't tell you right off the top how much you're going to save until we get into it. Let me tell you a little bit about myself and the company real briefly. Telcom Consulting was founded in 2005 by my wife Beverly and myself. Beverly is the president and she brings to the company executive administration experiences from Fortune 500 companies such as Electronic Data Systems and Boeing. I, being the principal consultant, have over 40 years of Telcom experience with companies such as Southwestern Bell, US Sprint, Electronic Data Systems, MCI, WorldCom, and Broadwing. I hold a bachelor's of science degree in electrical engineering from University of Missouri in Raleigh, Missouri. And I have spent many years provisioning PBXs, working with end-user billing, carrier billing, and service order systems. In other words, I know the system from the ground up, from the technical side and from the vendor side. And I have decided to start this company called Telcom Consulting to assist the users in saving money because in today's world, there's nobody on your side. The vendors that you have are for the vendors because that's just the way that we do business. TCC is Telcom Consulting. Receives no kickbacks or incentive from Telcom suppliers. Our independent, objective Telcom Communications Consulting recommendations are based solely on your best interest and compromise and comprised consideration of an available rates and plans. In other words, TCC looks out for you. Our consultants are professional, independent, objective telephone experienced people delivering essentially telecommunications consulting services and advice to improve your bottom line. Our services can save you time, increase profits, and security, and produce efficient gains. If your business is like most businesses or like other counties, there's about 80% chance that you're spending about 20% to 50% more on Telcom expenses than necessary. TCC comes with no cost. We use none of your resources, no obligations, to do a Telcom expense optimization services for you. TCC works to a different paradigm. Instead of making commissions on how much you spend, we share in how much you save. The only way we get paid is if you reduce your Telcom expenses. And this is done by sharing a percentage of the savings over 24 months. TCC and its affiliates are helping owners, CEOs, CFOs reduce their Telcom expenses 20% to 50%, 80% of the time, while 70% of them never change vendors. Together with our affiliates, we have a solid track record of success that proves our best business practices model will work. It can work for you as well. So bottom line is, if we can't save your Tel... If we can't save your money, you don't owe us anything. And that's kind of where we're at. It's on a consensus basis.
Let me jump in here. I had a meeting with him. Mayor Alexander approached me about meeting with him. I was like, okay, I'll meet with him and find out what they've got to say. And did it mostly because an old friend of mine, someone I've known for many years. But I started thinking about it after he made his presentation to me. I'm a frequent snow user. That's probably the understatement of the year. And I have my own private cell phone that I utilize. And I was getting a bill of about $500 a month for a while under a plan that I was in at that time. And every year, it would get renewed. And nobody ever told me that there was a better plan out there for me to use. And so one day, I went and I renewed it and I was tired of those $500 a month bills that I was paying out of my own pocket. And I asked them to see what other plans they are. Now I use my phone probably as much or more than I did. And under the new plan, I pay $130 a month. I save $350 a month just because I had the foresight to say, hey, is there anything else for me? He's right. They sell you product, but they don't tell you that there's a better product if you don't ask for one. And because it's not to their advantage, the more they sell you, the more money they make for themselves. And you need an independent person to look at your systems and find out whether or not you are really using your system effectively. One example that he gave me, which in Willacy County, you have all these valley-wide lines. We have tons of them. Almost every phone we have has got a valley-wide line. And you don't pay long-distance charges on those valley-wide lines, but you pay a certain fee for the valley-wide lines, right? And so when he looked at Willacy County, they had like 10 valley-wide lines over there. And he analyzed the total number of long-distance phone calls that they made that would be long-distance calls. And they were paying tons of more money for valley-wide lines than what it would have cost them to pay for the long-distance phone calls. Because everybody just assumed, well, you know, valley-wide lines are going to save you money. Well, they don't save you money if you don't make a lot of long-distance phone calls. You're spending more money. And so when he looked through the way of doing business on that and certain phone lines that they've got and certain agreements that they have with the phone company, for a little county like Willacy County, a little saving of $20,000 a year. Cameron County is somewhere around 20 times bigger than Willacy County. And more than that. Let's see, there's 17,000 or 18,000 people in Willacy County and we have close to 400,000 people. So whatever that divides it to, that's how much bigger we are. And our budget is significantly higher. So, you know, I don't think it'll hurt to either work with him or go out for proposals to get someone to look at how we do business on our phone lines. Both? Are you talking about landlines and...
Yes, all communications pages.
Cell lines and come up with a proposal on whether we're doing things the right way or not. And we may end up saving significant amounts of money. And if he doesn't find it, if somehow we're doing something very effectively, which will be one of the first times I've seen that happen, you know?
One of the areas...
I shouldn't say it that way. As effectively as we can.
One of the areas that is real volatile is, like you mentioned, was like contracts. Normally, a lot of times you enter into a contract with a telecommunications vendor under some type of promotional arrangement. Well, that promotion has a lifetime. So say after 24 months, that promotional is gone and you revert back to a higher fee that was there before, but no one tells you and you just keep getting the bill and getting the bill. And there may be other ways that you can reconstruct or renegotiate that contract and get it back down. And that's an area where I've saved quite a bit of money.
Let me ask... Go ahead. Let me ask you a little bit about the service you normally provide. I've been involved with other entities where we've had audits come in, people like yourself, different companies come in and do an audit of the service being provided. And what they would find in some cases would be that the entity was paying for lines that had been disconnected, was paying fees that were incorrect for what service they were providing. But they weren't really necessarily recommending what we should have. They were really looking at what had been billed, you know, the past type thing, and recovering monies from the providers for those past discrepancies. And lots of money in lots of cases had been paid back to the users. Would your service include an audit of what we've done backwards and what we need to be doing in the future?
Yes. That was one thing. I just finished one for Willacy that's been brought up here. Was able to go back to their particular carriers and retrieve something like $11,000. This was in one-time refunds back from them and based on basically what you...
A few years back, the city of Brownsville retrieved over half a million dollars in a one-time refund on telecommunications systems.
Well, one thing I found is a lot of times, you know, there's different areas of taxes that come under one. One area is taxes. And just to give you maybe an example, and right now I can't really talk from facts because I don't know how you're set up. But let's say that some way Brownsville communicates with Harding and you have so many circuits or lines going up there. And if, and I'm going to get a little technical here, but if you have like T1 lines going from here to Harding for communication purposes, there is a breakover point whereby that if you reach so many T1s, it's actually cheaper to get the bigger bundle than it is to keep adding on T1s. And so I will look at those and how I do that is I have programs and I have... I'm a member of an organization that has all the latest tariffs. So the latest tariffs, the telephone company or the long-distance carrier or your internet provider is not going to come to you with their newest tariff and their newest promotion because you've signed up back here, okay? So it's up to the county to decide, hey, I don't longer, I want to renegotiate to your new rate, you see? And rates are coming down all the time. So if you haven't renegotiated your contract in the last four or five years, I would say you have a real good chance of saving some money there, you see? You just didn't...
When is the last time you renegotiated our contract?
That's when we let go of Sprint and then got them back. Or...
Mobile. Just for cell phones.
But for the others?
No, we would like to add a little fan's line so we can pass the particular agenda item. My office in conjunction with my corps engages in the services probably once every two years on average. We do look at our rates and then also the Department of the Attorney, Jim Roberts actively negotiates that type of services. I'm not saying that we can't stand the use of audits, but we do engage inside having a look at it and we would share savings. I think we have a charge of three months for the service that is...
We have a question about a bid award with a vendor of utilities that was renewed by the court on May the 3rd of this year. And that contract ends May of next year.
And what is that?
We had a previous bid two years back. The vendor awarded with Southwest Tariff Analyst. They provided the service. And prior to that, two years before, was a vendor called Phone Billing Examiner that has also provided the service back then.
To do exactly what he says?
That's correct, sir.
And have we... And we've never gotten any reports to commissioners about what the results are? I mean, we have... I mean, either they find something or they don't find something. Does somebody tell us when they...
When they save us money?
When they save us some money or when they tell us that what we're doing is... I can't believe that they've conducted audits and we don't have a follow-up and nobody's told us about it.
The auditors...
But I mean, if we haven't negotiated any new agreements, Frayn was saying, well, the difference between what they do and what he does is that they do forward-looking audits whereas he's proposing both. And what I'm saying is, well, yeah, if that's the case, that may be a little bit different. But I would think that somebody would... That if you conduct an audit, that it results in us doing business a little bit different because I'm assuming, like I said, we're not as efficient as we should be a lot of times. And so when we have an opportunity to have somebody take a look at the way we do business, and it should result in some changes being proposed on how we do business. And if that's the case, I would think that at least the four of us that are up here today would have been told that there's some changes being made on our telecommunications system or that we have new contracts brought before us on that or something. I asked him to come up here because I had never heard of us doing this because we had never gotten a presentation as commissioners on...
We typically bring this particular RFP to the court and have you all approve the RFP specs.
We had a presentation a couple of years ago.
Yes, we did. And typically what they do is find little bitty operational changes for certain departments like, hey, you have two phone lines. Your department here moved from here to here and there's two lines still left. Now, I didn't know if the court was interested in two phone lines that may have been inactive that, you know, we were paying on for a few months. Because we shuffle departments quite a bit in this county and that you do have a full-time technician looking at those issues. I was unaware the court wanted to make sure that, you know, if we overpaid a tax on one month that we got reimbursed, that sort of issue.
We're referring to as...
Well, we're not talking about significant changes. Now, you know, the computer department has brought to you significant changes with regards to future plans for telephone and telecommunications regarding voice-over IP. In fact, we've had Southwestern Bell, now AT&amp;T, here a number of times talking about certain plans and certain new features that we have in place. So communication issues have been brought to the court over a number of years, a number of times. And even regarding audits that we have brought over almost on average every once every two years.
We've never been... I mean, I haven't seen a presentation of results of an audit. Do you make us presentations? Am I missing something?
We typically do not. We typically find small changes here and there, like there was a phone line inactive or there was a line that was abandoned by a department that moved. Typically, the Commissioners' Court doesn't get into the very detailed...
And how do we pay these people that do these audits? A fee?
A fee for shared services just as this gentleman here is...
Oh, for whatever they save, they keep half or something?
Yes. And that's brought to the court.
We don't pay them a set fee where we just pay them to do the audit?
No, they develop a report and then a check is drafted and the Commissioners' Court approves the check. Every check that we release is approved by the Commissioners' Court.
Where did the money come from?
From the savings?
From the savings?
When is the agreement expiring?
A year from now, is that correct? A year from May?
Well, following what the concept that you've brought to us, which is a good one, then I would be remiss in not asking, is this your best plan that you have to offer us?
Currently, yes. And what I do is very thorough in that I document every phone line that you have on a spreadsheet. And I show you all the costs from your invoice. And I take the CSRs, which is a customer service request when you first order the service back when that was, that was a few years ago or last week. I look at the last three months' phone bills. I put all this on a spreadsheet, line by line, item by item, cost by cost. And when I come back to you with my report, I'll show you each item that I'm deleting, that I recommend being deleted. And there's a value on that right off your invoice and right off the customer service record. So there is no guess on how much you're saving. It's documented, the savings off of the spreadsheet and your total. In other words, if I discover some lines that's not being used, that's terminated in a closet with no phones attached, that phone has a $38 cost, that $38 cost will be omitted on the tabulation of the savings. So that on the savings, everything else being equal, you would show a $33 savings because we disconnected this one phone, okay?
Well, maybe what we need to do is request a report from the current contractor. And if we don't get... If we don't get what we want, I think then we need to go back and consider something different?
Looking at this.
Yeah, because I don't know what these other guys are supposed to do. I'd like to hear from that because we've never really... I just can't. I mean, I just can't see how you would not achieve significant savings by doing just a massive audit of how we... I mean, we have thousands of phone lines in this...
Paid back to the, to the users. Would your service include an audit of what we've done backwards?
Yes.
And what we need to be doing in the future?
Yes, uh, that, that was one thing in the, I just finished one for, for Willacy that's been brought up here. Was able to, to go back to their particular carriers and retrieve something like, uh, eleven thousand dollars. This was in one-time refunds.
Yeah.
Back from them and based on, basically what you.
Well, a few years back, the city of Brownsville retrieved over half a million dollars in a one-time refund.
On?
On telecommunications systems.
Well, one thing, one thing I found is a lot of times, you know, there's different, there's different areas of taxes.
Yes.
They come under one, one area is, is taxes. And just to give you maybe an example, and right now I can't really talk from facts because I don't know how you're set up. But let's say that some way Brownsville communicates with Hardingen. And you have so many circuits or lines going up there. And if, if, and I'm gonna get a little technical here, but if you have like T1 lines going from, from here to Hardingen for communication purposes, there is a breakover point whereby that if you reach so many T1s, it's actually cheaper to get the, the bigger bundle than it is to keep adding on T1s. And so I will look at those and how I do that is I have programs and I have, I'm a member of a organization that has all the latest tariffs. So the latest tariffs, the telephone company or, uh, the, the long-distance carrier or your internet provider is not gonna come to you with their newest tariff and their newest promotion because you signed up back here, okay? So it's up to, it's up to the county to decide, hey, I don't longer, I wanna renegotiate to your new rate, you see? And rates are coming down all the time. So if you haven't renegotiated your contract in the last four or five years, I would say you have a real good chance of saving some money there, you see? You just didn't.
When is the last time we renegotiated our contract?
So.
That's when we let go, it was spring, and then got him back.
Or mobiles.
That's just for cell phones.
But for the others.
But in terms of record, Heinz Smart, do you remember?
No, we would like to add a little fan's line so we can pass a particular agenda item. Uh, my office in conjunction with my corps engages in this services probably once every two years on average. We do look at our rates and then also through Department of Attorney, Jim Roberts actively negotiates that type of services. I'm not saying that we can't stand the use of audit, but we do engage inside having a look at it as we would share savings. I think we have a current agreement.
We have a question about a bid award with a vendor of cost utilities that was renewed by the court on May the 3rd of this year. And that contract ends mid of next year.
And what is that?
Prior to them, we had a previous bid, uh, two years back, a vendor awarded with Southwest Tariff Analyst. They provided the service. And prior to that, two years before, was a vendor called Phone Billing Examiner that has also provided the service back then.
To do exactly what he says?
That's correct, sir.
And have we, and what, and we've never gotten any reports to commissioners about what the results are? I mean, we have, I mean, either they find something or they don't find something. Does somebody tell us when they, there's changes that are made? When they save us some money or when they tell us that what we're doing is? I can't believe that they've done, they've conducted audits.
We don't have a follow-up.
And we don't have a follow-up and nobody's told us about it.
Forward-looking.
Yeah.
So the auditors.
Right, but, but I mean, if we haven't negotiated any new agreements, Premmy was saying, well, the difference between what they do and what he does is that they do forward-looking, uh, audits, whereas he's proposing both. Um, and what I'm saying is, well, yeah, if that's the case, that, that may be a little bit different. But I would think that somebody would, that, that if you conduct an audit, that it results in us doing business a little bit different because I'm assuming, like I said, we're not as efficient as we should be all, uh, a lot of times. And so when we have an opportunity to have somebody take a look at the way we do business, and, um, it should result in some changes being proposed on how we do business. And if that's the case, I would think that the, at least the four of us that are up here today would have been told that there's some changes being made on our telecommunications system or that we have new contracts brought before us on that or something. I, you know, I asked him to come up here because I had never heard of us doing this, um, because we had never gotten a presentation by, as commissioners, uh.
We typically bring this particular RFP to the court and have you all approve the, uh, RFP specs.
We had a presentation a couple of years ago.
Yes, we did. And typically what they do is find a little bitty, little bitty operational changes for certain departments. Like, hey, you have two phone lines, your department here moved from here to here and there's two lines still left. Now, I didn't know if the court was interested in two phone lines that may have been inactive that, you know, we were paying on for a few months. Because we shuffle departments quite a bit in this county and that, uh, you do have a full-time technician looking at those issues. I was unaware the court wanted to make sure that, uh, you know, if we overpaid a tax on one month that we got reimbursed and that sort of issues.
Well, we're referring to significant.
Well, we're not, we're not talking about significant changes. Now, you know, the, the computer department has brought to you significant changes with regards to future plans for telephone and telecommunications regarding voice-over IP. In fact, we've had, uh, Sylvester Bell, now AT&amp;T, here a number of times talking about certain plans and certain new features that we have in place. So communication issues have been brought to the court over a number of years, a number of times. And even regarding audits that we have brought over, uh, almost on average, every once every two years. So.
We've never been, I mean, I haven't seen a presentation of results of an audit. Do you make us presentations? Am I missing something?
We typically do not. We typically find small changes here and there, like there was a phone line inactive or there was a line that was abandoned by a department that moved. Typically, the Commissioners' Court doesn't get into the very detailed.
And how do we pay these people that do these audits? A fee?
A fee for shared services, just as, uh, this gentleman here.
Oh, for whatever they save, they keep half or something or what?
Yes, and that's brought to the court.
We don't pay them a set fee where we just pay them to do the audit?
No, they, they develop a, uh, a report and then a check is drafted and the Commissioners' Court approves the check. Every check that we release is approved by Commissioners' Court.
But where did the money come from?
From the savings.
From the savings?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
When is the agreement, uh, expiring?
A year from now, is that correct?
A year.
Well, following, uh, following what, uh, the concept that you've brought to us, which is a good one, then I, I would be remiss in not asking, is this your best plan that you have to offer us?
Uh, currently, yes. And what I do is, is very thorough in that I document every phone line that you have on a spreadsheet. And I show you all the cost from your invoice. And I take the CSRs, which is a customer service request where you first ordered the service back when everything was, that was many years ago or last week. I look at the last three months' phone bills. I put all this on a spreadsheet, line by line, item by item, uh, cost by cost. And when I come back to you with my report, I'll show you each item that I'm deleting, that I recommend being deleted, and there's a value on that right off of your invoice and right off the customer service record. So there is no guess on how much you're saving. It's, it's documented, the savings, uh, off of the spreadsheet and you total. In other words, if I discover some lines that's not being used, that's terminated in a closet with no phones attached and that phone has a thirty-eight dollar cost, that thirty-eight dollar cost will be omitted on, be omitted on the tabulation of the savings. So that on the savings, everything else being equal, you would show a thirty-three dollar savings because we disconnected this one phone, okay?
Well, maybe, maybe what we need to do is request a report from the current contractor. And if we're, if we don't get, if we don't get what we want, I think then we need to go back and, and consider something different.
Looking at this.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know what these other guys are supposed to do. I'd like to hear from that.
Okay.
Um, and 'cause we've never really, I, I just can't, I mean, I just can't see how you would not achieve significant savings by doing a, just a massive audit of how we, I mean, we have thousands of phone lines in this.
But I agree, Judge, but because we do this on a regular, ongoing basis, it's a tweaking of the system each time. This, if we had not performed the services in twenty years and this gentleman is offering the service, then we might achieve really significant savings.
So the difference then between what he's offering and what we've had in the past is a more sophisticated analysis?
I really have no idea about this gentleman's service.
Why don't we do this?
Most of all the vendors that come to us are former telecom employees who left their business and went on to, uh, perform their own services. You know, they're usually insiders who had that expertise, so.
Why don't we do this? Why don't you give him a copy of what they do for us and have him take a look at it? And see if we're talking about apples and apples as opposed to apples and oranges?
Well, all our current bids are on the web for anybody to look at.
Our current what?
All our bids and RFPs are available.
Bids on the contracts.
So the specs are available for anybody to look at who gets on our website.
Have you, have you seen that?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, why don't you take a look at that and then just give back to us and let us know whether or not this is the same thing? We're dealing with.
Well, I, I still, I would like a report from our current vendor.
Sure, we can do that.
I mean, even if it's just like a one-pager telling us, this is what we found in the last eighteen months or whatever they've been.
We'll do that and we'll, uh, send you a report via email and hard copy.
That'd be fun.
Now, uh, Mark and, and Mike, did you get the information that we got on, on what they do?
Well, uh, there was some backup in the agenda, but I just got a book a second ago.
'Cause I would, I would like for, for the two of you to also look at it and, and get a feel for, well, what is the difference?
Well, not only we look at telecom services, we look at utilities, electric services. We look at water utilities and things of that nature. Uh, with electric and water, because of many of our services here are with PUB, then we're locked in. But in those particular outlying areas outside of PUB jurisdiction, we competitively bid our electric services. And so we also look at that during that particular, uh, bid process or RFP process. So we're.
When's the last time we bid our phone service?
Well, for the Dancy building, we just brought within the last three months to you a new program.
Well, I'm not talking about the Dancy building, I'm talking about everybody else.
All those.
You know, the lines that have been in existence twenty years.
Uh, I think about five years ago, we entered into a Plexar agreement with regards to this building.
Every, every five years has been the, the telephone line service. And, uh, we're at the tail end of our current Plexar agreement. Jim Roberts and the, uh, AT&amp;T, which was there, are reviewing the current agreement. And, uh, they're working with Texas and Two Thousand, which is a DIR agreement with the state to try and ensure that we're still getting the best price possible for the county. And that should be on the agenda in the next couple of months. Uh, uh, AT&amp;T is working with PUC, Public Utilities Commission, to go over the rates being offered to the county for the DIR construct with the state.
What's the difference between that and what y'all wanna do?
Well, what I wanna do, I, I just do telecommunications. That, that's it. I don't do the, the electric or the water or that kind of thing. And.
But in the area of telecommunications.
I'm not, I'm not a vendor. I don't, I don't sell products, I don't sell services. I am an independent contractor, if you will, that analyzes the across-the-board.
So what, so what you're saying is that the guys that are reviewing our contracts are the vendors?
Well, it's their AT&amp;T and they may be.
They're the vendors. And so we utilize services like this gentleman.
Well, did you, did you hear what I asked? Did you hear what I asked, Mark?
Yes.
I thought, I thought I heard him say that what you, which, that the people that review our contracts to see whether we are getting the best deal possible are the vendors themselves. Is that what you said?
No, sir.
No?
My, my answer was to a question concerning the telephone lines themselves. We have a Plexar contract and the Plexar contract is being reviewed by AT&amp;T and DIR, a state agency that has contracts for telephone line services.
Right, you asked when the last time we bid our telephone services out, and that's what he was responding to.
And our question, I still don't have.
I don't understand.
Then the vendors are not the ones analyzing?
Well, we have a current, uh, service that looks at our utilities and especially our telecom at this time. And they look at what AT&amp;T does. So.
That's not what Michael was saying.
No, it's not what he just said because he asked the question, when was the last time we bid our telephone services out? But he also referred to you earlier that we do have a service that audits our telecom services.
Well, we'd like to get a report.
And I think that's what we'll provide to you. Normally, they're not real earth-shaking. It's usually on one or two or three or four accounts, something that needs to be changed or we have an inactive line here. And so we get the results and get with the computer department's telecommunications specialist and make the changes.
Okay. Well, if anybody can reduce our, our costs by twenty to fifty percent, I would be interested in looking at that.
And I'd like to know if, in the past, and we'll get that from the report, did they reduce it?
Here's what we'd like to do, okay? 'Cause, 'cause, um, I, I, I think that, that what you're hearing is two things. One is you're hearing us believing that an examination of our telecommunications system would likely result in significant savings. That's what I would thought. Um, I just don't remember any significant changes being proposed by anyone over the time that I've been around. Uh, but, you know, maybe it was an incremental thing that.
No, guys, there are not significant changes because we do this on a ongoing basis.
I, I heard you, you said that three times, okay? I'm, I'm just trying to cut.
I'm just hearing the third time that you asked.
I'm just trying to present the pictures of your faces right now, okay? We're hearing, we're believing that that, some of us would believe that that would be the case. On the other hand, I'm hearing from the auditor's office that, that in fact, what is being proposed by this gentleman is done on a regular basis and that, that on a regular basis, changes are made. Um, and that those changes are implemented, or changes are recommended, those changes are implemented. And so if that's the case, then that's why you haven't had significant changes proposed to us because it's, happens over a period of time. I don't know the answer to that, okay? And I don't think any of us do. And so what, what Commissioner Garcia is suggesting is come to us with your guy. I don't really want just a written report. I want him to come and make a presentation to us on what they do and, and what, what changes it proposed and, and explain to us how this works. I mean, how, who, who looks at our contracts? What do you look at? What, what is the kind of an anal, what is the kind of analysis that is actually conducted by these auditors to determine whether or not we're doing business the best way possible to save taxpayers as much money as possible? And, and, and tell us how, what has resulted in that. Uh, and then we can make a decision of whether this is what this gentleman has already proposed and you're doing it. Um, and, and then we can say, thank you, but we're already doing it. And at the same time, you, you know what is being proposed based upon what's in the website? Uh, so you can access that, come back to me or whomever and tell us whether or not it's apples and apples or apples and oranges. And then, and then after we do this, then we can figure out whether or not we wanna go back and do something more extensive or whether what you have been doing, you've been doing your job.
Yes.
And Michael, we believe you always do your job. Um, and we think you do a great job, actually. Um, and, uh, and, and, and we'll move on to the next issue.
Well, I'd just like to close real quickly here in that, that I, you know, I believe in my own mind that there's areas that possibly I can save you money. And that's why I'm willing to gamble and take the risk that I will spend the time doing the analysis, giving you the report and everything else. And if, if these gentlemen are correct and there's no major changes, well, then that will be reflected in my report and you owe me nothing and thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Yes, thank, thank you so much. I have a question, I think Commissioner Garcia did too. In Willacy County, were, uh, was Willacy County keeping up? Had they been doing some kind of auditing or they had never done anything?
I don't think they had in years. This is something that, uh.
So that, that might, that might be, uh.
It might be a big difference, of course, yes.
That might be a big difference.
And, and when I talked to Judge Salinas, he says, bring him over. I need to meet Randall so that he can come by and, and look at what we have. And most certainly because it wasn't gonna cost him anything. All right, well, we'll look at it and then we'll figure out what to do. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Let me have a motion to acknowledge.
So move.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Garcia, my Commissioner Tamani for discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Motion carries. We gotta go into executive session right now. I want you to go into executive session.
Thank you.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, my Commissioner Tamani for discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're not in executive session. We still have to read the C I G comment for section one point zero seven one, one A B and two.
Yep.
One point zero seven one two, one point zero seven two. That's it.
Oh, um, this.
Item number twenty-eight A, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus U S, uh, versus, uh, FOTR USA, formerly known as Landmark. Rule of settlement, again, a motion to acknowledge or support of counsel.
So move.
Second. My Commissioner, no, my, second, my Commissioner Garcia for discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Item number twenty-eight B, possible action on, uh, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issues regarding the Cameron County detention tenants and for Cameron County Sheriff's Department's administration building. Uh, and I'll take that together with item number F, uh, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning status of old prior issues and two agreements of attorney general's office Texas commission on jail standards. Motion to not report of counsel.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, my, second, my Commissioner Wood for a discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-eight C, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issues regarding, related to possible acquisition of real property for the Dancy Building renovation project. Motion to, um.
I would say, um, have the Public Works Department proceedings directed in negotiating all first purchase of property.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, my Commissioner Tamani for a discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Twenty-eight D, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Landmark Park in La Paloma. Precinct number four.
Acknowledge report of Parks Director Javier Mendez.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tamani, second, my Commissioner Garcia for a discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Twenty-eight E, possible action on deliberation regarding sale of real, real property for FM five-eleven expansion property.
Move to accept offer.
Second.
Text, text on.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second, my Commissioner Tamani for a discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I. Both motions carries. Twenty-eight F, possible action on confer with, oh, we got that already.
You did that one.
Possible twenty-eight G, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning liability issues at the Cameron County Jail infirmary.
Acknowledge report of counsel.
So move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wood, second, my Commissioner Tamani for a discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Twenty-eight H, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel one for Ebony Road Project, precinct number three. Motion to authorize purchase of property for two thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tamani, second, my Commissioner Garcia for a discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Twenty-eight I, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning status of contract with Lymph, Fam and Ross LLP on a matter in which duty of the attorney to the general, to the governmental body and the state disciplinary rules of professional conduct of state by of Texas clear conflicts with chapter, with this chapter.
Acknowledge report of counsel to proceedings directed in executive session.
Okay.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second, my Commissioner Tamani for a discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Twenty-eight J, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Broel, Gonzalez and Sonia Gonzalez, Chris Cameron County, Texas, and Kessavri and Noya individually in his official capacity. So action number zero-five-two-seventy-eight for discussion on sales of case.
Move to acknowledge report of counsel.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner, isn't that what do also that we're supposed to authorize the?
No, he was just giving his thought as a part.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wood, second, my Commissioner Tamani for a discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Twenty-eight K, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning our Fonsa Salaf Saad DVA, Sea Ranch Grocery and Taco concession lease agreement at Eagle Black Park.
Approve expansion to the front of the, um, concession.
So move.
Uh, you know, I would like to at some point get, is Javier still here? He's back here? Well, at least if we get like a schematic, a sketch or something of what they're gonna do.
In the contract, it says that any improvements have to be.
Come back to that.
Okay, so we're gonna give them.
You know, get prior approval in the community records.
Okay, so, okay, it's fine.
The motion is to go ahead and negotiate for the expansion of the facility.
To the front.
To the front, uh, pursuant to the current agreement.
Okay, that's correct.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by, who made the motion?
I did.
John?
John did.
Okay, John made the motion. And John, Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Garcia, any further discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Twenty-eight L, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issues related to beach user fees.
Move to acknowledge park, uh, ring rangers.
Directors.
And to proceed as directed.
And proceed as directed.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamani for a discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Twenty-eight M, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning the possible acquisition of property. Report Isabel.
Move to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamani for a discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Twenty-eight N, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning the status of contract with JR Jones in consideration for liquidated damages. Same thing?
To acknowledge his report and then to proceed as directed.
Proceed as directed.
Motion by Commissioner Tamani, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, any further discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Twenty-eight O, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning the property of the north part of South Padre Island, the flats and the island Baptist Church.
To proceed, for, move to acknowledge report of counsel and for us to proceed as directed in executive session.
So move.
Second.
My Commissioner, second, my Commissioner Garcia for a discussion, all those affairs signified by State and I.
Aye.
All those affairs. Okay. Is there a supplemental?
It's a consent.
Right, right. Okay, going back to the, to the agenda, to the top of the agenda.
True.
Two, a presentation of mid-year review by budget officer and county auditor. Those are gonna take a while. Let me get the action items out of the way real quick, okay? Uh, sorry. Seven, consideration and approval of a change order number one for the Semenito Levi Annex renovation project.
Actually, you gave.
I did. And eight, consideration and approval of color selection for various finished materials for the Semenito Levi Annex building renovation project.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, we have on the agenda the first, uh, change order on, on the Levi's renovation. It's, uh, there are actually seven items on the change order. These are items that have cropped up as the contractor was out there working. I'll go through them briefly and answer any questions on them if you'd like. Uh, the first item on there, it says build up low section of roof. Uh, there's an ad of twenty-eight sixty-four for that. What happened was when the contractor got out there and he started tearing up the roof, uh, there had been an area where water had been standing all the time. Well, once they pulled up the old roof, they found out why the area was lower. It, it actually was built that way. For some reason, because the building was built with so many additions, for some reason, when they built one addition, they had it down between an inch, an inch and a half, uh, from the regular surface of the roof. And that created that, that low spot there. So, um, we, we've asked the contractor if there was some way we could build that all up to the same level. Uh, he can do it with insulation and, uh, the price to go ahead and build that roof level up. Uh, so, and we have to do this in order to get the warranty. They, they will not warrant a roof with a, with an area where water's gonna pond. So, um, that's what that item is. The, uh, the second item is a change on, uh, to an armored cable instead of steel conduits in the walls. Uh, typically, when you have steel stud walls, you can just run conduits, there are slots, and you can go ahead and just slide the, the conduits in there. Because they're wood stud walls, you cannot. Because they're wood stud walls, you cannot do this. There's no way we can really get steel conduit in there. So, the contractor asked for, um, the ability to use an armored cable, which they would drill holes through the stud walls and run the armored cable through the wall horizontally. We checked with the engineer and with the code, it allows this. And so, we had asked the contractor for a credit to allow the use of this material rather than, than the steel conduit. And the second item is, is for that, to go ahead and do all the horizontal runs rather than using rigid steel conduits to use flexible armored cable. And so, that's a deduct of 6563. The third item is, um, one of the walls that we showed to be demolished, when they actually started tearing it down, it turns out it's a concrete wall, it's not a dry wall, it's just covered with drywall. And not only is it a concrete wall, it's actually supporting a change in the roof structure and a, and an AC unit on it. So, in order to go ahead and remove this wall, two things would have to happen. First, it's, it's going to have to, uh, have some structural reinforcement put all around where the opening is going to be. That has to be put in place. Then the contractor can come back in and then cut out the wall.
Why do we need to take this wall out, Judge?
Uh, it's because of the way the plan is set up, Judge. We looked at the possibility of leaving it in, but it's, it's just no way it's gonna work with the, uh, with the way things are laid out now. It's, uh, the wall, it's just shown on the drawings, it's a regular wall. When we got out there, all that was, it was sheetrock on both sides. One side had bookshelves all on it, and the other side just had some, um, some countertops on it, so... But in, in the floor plan, the arrangement for that area, this is back in the area where the nurses and the pharmacy are, that, that wall has to be removed in order for that whole work. And so, to go ahead and make that change, that's an add of 4370. We have on there item number four, it says install new line for pharmacy sink. What happened there is, in the documents, we had stated that the contractor was to come out there and verify all the lines, the plumbing lines that we showed on the drawings. This was based on the drawings that we had gotten from the county. What we, we wanted is verified for two reasons. First of all, we didn't know if what we had was actually as built, and secondly, we didn't know the position of the lines. Well, as it turned out, when they, when they ran a camera down the lines, one of the lines that we showed to be used was totally collapsed, it was destroyed, it could not be used at all. So, that line, we had a sink in, um, in the hurt area that was going to be tied into that. We talked with the folks over at, um, the medical branch, and they said they could do without that sink, and so that sink has been deleted, so we didn't have to worry about where we were gonna tie that in. The second line, uh, they, they, one of the, well, they, they checked all the lines, but in, in the second line, they found out it actually went into the ditch. So the line was illegal, and we couldn't use that line. In that line, we were going ahead and we were putting a janitor's sink. So we had to delete that janitor's sink in that line because we can't use that. The third line is where we were gonna install the pharmacy sink, and when they got out there, that line does not exist. So, um, what this item number four represents, it, it, it represents trenching from the area where the pharmacy sink is gonna go in, on, over to where we know there is an existing line, because there's two toilets out in the warehouse, and we're gonna go right into the front of those toilets where the plumbing is, and tie into that, that line. That, so item number four represents the trenching and the hyping to go ahead and put in that pharmacy sink, and it also includes the deletion of the janitor's sink that was going in the line to the ditch and the, uh, the sink in the, uh, the containment room back in the hurt area. And that is a, an add of 2110. Uh, item number five, which is the largest item, uh, has to do with the roof again. There, there's actually two different roofs up there, once they started tearing off. The original part of the, uh, the original part of the warehouse that's out there was built with a lightweight roof decking on it. Uh, the other additions from then on, which is, uh, probably 60% of the building now, is, is done without this lightweight roofing. So, we had expected lightweight everywhere, and it turns out it was only, it was only on the original part. Uh, the problem with it is, that requires, in order to get your bond, it requires a different type of fastening system. Uh, in, in the part where you don't have the lightweight roofing, you just put down rigid insulation, and then there's fasteners that go through the insulation and fasten it directly to the steel deck. Where the lightweight fill is, what you have to do is you actually have to fasten into the lightweight fill with the fasteners, not the steel decking. Problem is, the, uh, the, the lightweight fill is totally destroyed. For some reason, we suspect it was when they poured it originally, they just had way too much water in there. It's, it's all just pretty well crumbled up. And so, we could not fasten anything to it. We called the roofing manufacturer out there and asked him if it would be possible if we put layers of insulation over there, mechanically fasten the insulation through the, uh, the lightweight deck to the steel deck, if they would still warrant the roof if we did that. They had agreed to doing that, and so, that add is to go ahead and, and basically, over all that lightweight fill, come in and put insulation throughout that whole area. And so, that's, that's an add of 7884. There's a small add in there to reroute a fire sprinkle line. Uh, there were other, there were other plumbing lines along with the fire sprinkle line. Mr. Vadera and his folks actually rerouted a number of those lines. Unfortunately, they cannot, they cannot touch the fire sprinkle line, it's gotta be that contractor. So that's an $805 add. And the final item is a, we received a request to change out the ITT equipment, uh, to a type of equipment that the county is, is using now, and so, uh, we talked the contract about that. They, they came back and said they would change that at no cost, and so, that's on there, just to really document the change. It's a total add of 11470. I have to tell you quite honestly that this being a renovation, uh, this right here represents one half of 1% on a change order, and on a renovation, this is exceptionally rare. I mean, I can't believe that. You know, there's possibilities that there may be some other change order items, but this is the extent of what we've encountered so far, and I, I think, I think things are going really, really well as far as that goes. So Judge, uh, I have the originals for you, it's five copies. Uh, one is marked for the architect, one is marked for the contractor, the other three will remain with the county. I will give these to you.
Javier, and, uh, is the money there?
Yeah.
It's, it's in...
It's within the, uh...
It's within the...
What do you call it? The betterment fund?
No.
No? Huh?
This, this will be an add to the contract. No, if, if there was an actual, if there was an allowance for it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't even come before you with a change order, because there wouldn't be a change order, it would be just drawn from the allowance. Uh, originally, Judge, back when, when we were talking about what the building could possibly cost, I had recommended to the county to set up a line item for, for things like this, for betterment or whatever, of three and a half percent. I, I don't know if that was ever done or not, but it was not done in the contractor's contract.
Okay, so...
So where's the money coming from?
From proceeds.
Pardon?
From, from proceeds. All right, do you have a motion?
Move to approve, just second.
Second? Second? Is it second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamani for discussion. All those affairs, signified by state and I.
Aye.
Thank you. Is that all?
Eight.
Oh, yeah, without the colored stuff?
Well, before we get into that, Judge, let me just quickly point out, there, there may be some other items that'll come up on a change order. One, I, I know that we were talking about, Commissioner Garcia's aware of this, because he, he attends these meetings, but, um, the Health Department has asked for a price from the contractor to go ahead and run in some sewer and water and electric where they can go ahead and, and they have these outreach trailers that they send out to the neighborhoods for medical purposes, and where they would plug these in overnight and connect them up to the sewer and water. So, uh, we'll be getting a, a price from the contractor for that. It's my understanding that the Health Department's gonna be getting a grant to pay for it, and so, once we know what the price is, then they'll, they'll put in for that amount as a grant.
Okay. All right, item number eight, the color selections for the finished materials.
I have a small color board here, Judge. There are items on here that, that the contractor, it's, it's actually getting critical for him to be able to order these materials. The materials he has to order are this block, this metal roofing, and the ceramic tile. Everything else you see on the board is actually gonna be by the county. And so, Marcelino though needs these selections as well, so he can get his materials ordered. But what we're talking about is on the main entrance coming in that we're gonna now create on, on the, uh, where the public parking area is going to be. Uh, we have three different kinds of block on there, uh, and we're, we're just trying to alter the colors a little bit to get some interest, and then we're talking about having this patina green curved metal roof over it, so it will identify it as a, as a main entrance.
Well, they all look good on the first one for sure, would it? The green? It would have to be the second and third. Second or third?
You have all three colors.
All three colors appear there?
Yeah.
Which is, which is more prevalent?
Uh, I, I think the, uh, the...
Hopefully it's a light.
Light.
And the, the light tan and the most...
Is that the first one, this?
Okay, so...
Yeah, this is just kind of an accent, Commissioner. This, this is not, this is not a field color. And then you, you would have this, this patina green roof. The only other thing that the contractor has to order is, there are some, some new toilets that we're putting into the clinic area, and we have the walls and the floor for those clinics, the ceramic tile, he's doing that. The rest of these things, as I said, Marcelino is going to be ordering them, and certainly if, if the county's unhappy with any of those selections, we can just, uh, we can change.
Is that a rubber baseboard?
This year?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
Is that a gray color?
I'm sorry?
Is that a gray color?
Yes, it is.
What color tile is that next to it, the VTC floor?
It's primarily white with some specks in it, um, different colored specks.
Are we gonna, what kind of color of the wall's gonna be?
Uh, the walls are a, a kind of an off-white.
Would not the rubberized baseboard be better looking if it were a tan color as opposed to a gray, if that's what we're actually looking at?
With, with the wall, it, it could be tan, Commissioner.
Well, if it just looks like gray, it's gonna stand out like a sore...
It looks like a gray, tan would...
That gray looks sick.
There's some tan colors that would...
It, it should be changed.
Looked like the wall.
That's what I'm saying, these are items that...
That's why we're here, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, these are items that Marcelino ordered. And if, if you'd like, what we can do is, we can actually just come in with the chain, showing all the various finishes, and we can actually...
That would be a good idea.
I, I just needed some authority on these, so I can get contractors...
That gray, just, just the rest of the...
Well, but Marcelino needs to, as soon as we can, that we make those choices too, okay? Because he's gotta place his items in order.
Okay. So, so you want direction on everything? Or just on the stuff?
Well, I'd like approval on everything, Judge.
Okay, well...
Let me say something regarding these bays. If the county has the money, I think it'd be a whole lot nicer if you could put a wood base in there.
Well, we're talking about money differences, is this what's in this?
Yeah. Go back to money.
Well, how much would it cost more to put a wood base?
I, I have no idea.
This is a lot easier to maintain than wood bays. You don't have to worry about...
Maintenance and...
Maintenance is much better on this, but the color's not matching enough to walls.
Uh, did, did you have this at the, at the meeting?
No.
Commissioner Garcia, have you seen that before?
No.
No, this is the first time anyone's seen.
Can we approve it, everything minus the, the, the base? Give us a cost estimate on a wood base and, and show us what it would look like, a little, a wood base?
I'm, I'm sure Marcelino can get that price from the, uh, people he buys from.
Okay, can you tell us?
Say what the difference is.
I'd like to see what a wood base would look like, too. Okay?
Can you, if you get a...
Yeah, and what would it look like? Okay?
Okay.
All right, so we'll approve everything except for that.
And the base.
Okay? Motion by Commissioner Tamani, second by Commissioner Wood for discussion. All those affairs, signified by state and I.
Aye.
That's it? There's no questions regarding what's going on out there?
Well, it looks like it's going good, I know, you know...
I think it is, Judge. Uh, you know, there's, uh, you've got a situation where you've got the general contractor working, and you've got the county working alongside of him, and certainly, we knew going in, there was gonna be some, there was gonna be some problems as far as coordination and things of that nature, but for the most part, it's gone very well. I, I think, uh, the work is being completed, uh, in, in a, in a good manner. I think the county will be happy with it. Looks like you folks will get in there earlier than, than what you were expecting.
What are we looking at?
The, uh, in fact, I can just refer to this real quick, Judge. The contractor, he's prepared two schedules. One schedule was prepared based on the amount of days his contract allows. Uh, the other schedule is based on what he actually feels he can complete the job in. His schedule, he is showing a substantial completion date of October 13th, 2006. Okay, according to his contract, his actual date is February 13th, 2007. So he may, uh, you know, I don't know if he's necessarily gonna be able to get you in there in October, but, uh, it's my feeling, probably by November, you folks will be able to move in.
Well, the county judge would be very appreciative if we could finish by October.
When we went into this, we had another contractor who had a completion date of about October, November, and we were told emphatically that that won't happen, it can't happen, and that was one of the reasons to go in this contractor, because he did have a longer period of time. So it's kinda funny that now, all of a sudden, he can complete it earlier.
He wants to get his money.
I'm sure he does, but, you know, I think...
Well, I think a lot of it has to do with Marcelino's crew, you know? I mean, that, that's been, you know, they're, they've been pushing that schedule very significantly, and, uh, he's got some folks out there that are really working. Eddie has been on that project daily, and Marcelino's been there daily, just about, and, you know, they've moved the project, and then they've had some cooperation from the city of San Benito, as you well know, and when they get inspections and, and A, you know, most of the time you have to wait to get everything done at one time. They've been able to go in sections and get things moving, which normally would have had to wait, so...
And I have to say, Commissioner Garcia has kicked in his help, uh, in, in some, some items that have come up where we have, we've had to actually adjust, and it's in your project report. We've had to adjust the handicap park because we weren't getting the proper slopes, and, and so, you know, uh, some areas needed to be wrecked out, and the commissioner said he would have some people come out there and just wreck that out, you know, for the contractor to just continue on. So, I, I think everybody's working toward the same end, which is, you know, getting, So I think everybody's working toward the same end, which is, you know, getting in and out as quickly as they can. I still, my concern over the original construction schedule was that it did not realistically take into account the county's participation in the project. Now, it's going way better than anybody expected and so that's good. But I think if we would have been looking into reverse, and the schedule was not the reason on the other contract, Commissioner, that I recommended against it, that they did not have all the work covered. There was a very large item in there which they did not include in their bid and I felt that disqualified the bid.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, all. Nine, consideration authorization to utilize the Texas Cooperative Purchasing Network and negotiate contract with Centennial Construction to replace existing elevators at the Cameron County Judicial Courthouse. Is that yours, Mike, or who's doing that?
Marcelino.
Marcelino?
Listen, Judge, former Commissioners. On the background, each elevator that was admitted to the changer, as far as the new elevator that we need on the judicial side.
On that side?
Yes. Because of the emergency situation that we need to replace those generators, we can't find any parts anymore right now. Right now, we have to shut down one elevator right now, number one. So we were thinking with Mr. Mike Ford to go through Centennial, like a jack-in contract in order for them to
And we checked that out, is that, where are we at on that, Michael?
This is pretty much similar to 24 on the agenda. 24 is also an alternative to work with legal and negotiate through the CCPN contract with Centennial. The way the CCPN contract was set up is to allow for job order contracting for urgent projects that municipalities or counties may have a need for. And these contracts are awarded based on what's called an RS means benchmark, based on regions of the country. And the pricing structure is laid out in the RS means on an annual basis. So basically, what we're looking to do here, we met with the elevator vendors and one of their concerns is with one elevator down, the second elevator is running twice as much as it normally would. And these elevators are over 20 years old. So it may not be long before we may have both elevators down and we're trying to prevent that problem for occurring for the jurors and the individuals in the judicial side.
Do we comply with what we need to in regards to this, Wavia? Yes?
Yes, you can go ahead and use this contract because it goes through, it's like using the buy board, the Texas buy board.
Then I hope that we go ahead and approve the negotiation of contract.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Tamayo for a discussion on the present.
Aye. Thank you, Marcelino.
Thank you, Marcelino. Thank you, Michael. Ten, consideration authorization to request an additional registration of the TOTL workstation form from the Texas Department of Construction for the new Port Isabel Annex Building drive-up window and provide for additional person to serve that window.
We're getting ready to, well, the county's getting ready to open up that office. I believe it's going to be completed within 42, 45, maybe 60 days. And we need the proper equipment to have this equipment installed in the drive-up window. And as you all know, the existing building doesn't have a drive-up window, so we need additional equipment from Tech dot to be installed at the new building plus a, we'll request an additional person for that window.
So we have to pay for that equipment?
The equipment is leased to the county. I believe it's $1,500 a year. If we're able to generate enough business, then that $1,500 will go away. But not until we have the office, the drive-up window in operation.
You're showing the 1,500?
Yes.
Background.
Yes.
And then along with that, it's this personnel?
Exactly.
Extra personnel. Now, is this total, I presume that it's
That's for seven pay periods.
Okay.
From, I believe, July through September 30th.
You know, the way the building is set up, isn't it set up where that same person could work both the counter and the window? I mean, do we have, how many transactions do you do there on a daily basis, Tony?
We, I have a number, we have approximately 12,700 transactions a year in that office. Those are the numbers that
There's only one person working.
That's one person, yes. And between the drive-up window and the front counter, I believe it's about between 35 to 40 feet in distance. And I believe that the office is going to generate more business with the drive-up window and that being a new building and everything, I think it's going to generate
One person can't do that. I've been there where there's a line.
I personally, I've been in this business 30 years and one person can't handle drive-up window and the front counter. To date, for the last 12 months, we've generated, well, approximately $2.5 million in revenues in that office with 12,791 transactions. These 12,000 different transactions are property tax, motor vehicle, TABC license, merch license, and vehicle inventory tax collections.
The motion to
So who?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garza for discussion on the present.
Aye.
Do we have a place to fund this from?
Not at the present time. I'm currently working on the lab salaries, but that kind of ties into the budget presentation as to the status of everything else. I know they need time in order to, excuse me, to order the equipment or request the equipment from Tech dot. I don't know if we have to approve the position today since it's not going to start until July.
Just approved.
I don't have funding set up for it right now.
Well, it's approved
Pending
The open of the building.
Pending funding.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. We'll get to you just one second. We've got the consent items, 11 and travel. All right, consent item, now item number 11 is supposed to be an action item and it got accident to put in consent items so we can take it up out of worry. Y'all had a lot of discussion on this last time around.
Right, the last time.
And it's back, discussion and possible action, authorizing Cameron County Department of Taxation, building permit division to have access to Texas as a collector database file.
Well, it has more than that, Judge. You didn't read the other part. To ensure the collection of all ad valorem taxes are paid or payment arrangements have been made before issuing permits.
How long have I waited on that agenda?
This is what's on the agenda request.
Right. Initially, this was put out by the tax as a collector. My discussions with the tax as a collector, it's not our intention to deny a building permit to anybody who may own delinquent taxes. In fact, if somebody owes delinquent taxes, we want them to enhance the value of their property because there are already remedies available to the county to
May I ask one question? Why are you telling us about this when this item was put on the agenda by the Texas as a collector? I mean, nowhere on this paper do I see Mark Yates.
Okay.
I mean, Tony's sitting back there, I think that, you know, I mean, I don't know, but you know, I mean, Tony's there.
He can also
I guess you work with it.
We've also had discussions with
Yeah, but this is not even money, Judge.
Judge Verstappen.
You know, this is not collection of, this is
This is not to prohibit anybody from
I mean, I don't mean to get on this case, but you know what? Tony's here.
Okay, well
Mark, you can stay up there.
That's okay, that's fine. Mr. Clay, he and I have had extensive discussions on this and with Judge Verstappen.
Okay, Tony, you're on.
This is not to deny anybody from getting a building permit. This is to give information, to get more information on the building permit application and being, since we have all the records, I'd like the building permit department to have as much as information as possible so that after that information can be transferred over to other agencies, one being the appraisal district. But this is not to prohibit anybody from getting a building permit. But if they are delinquent in any type of taxes, of course, the taxpayer will be notified by that clerk, you're delinquent in taxes and they can surely go to our tax office and pay their property taxes.
Would this facilitate things for you? I know that in the past, it's hard to find some of the owners.
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am. The whole idea is to get us any type of improvements in our tax rolls as soon as possible.
I don't have a problem with it. I just, I don't know. I've been getting a lot of complaints recently about people getting the new appraisals from the Cameron County. And I know you're not on the board, but if you could just relay this message about
Tony is on the board.
Yes, we are.
You are on the board, yes, right, yes.
All those concerns have been addressed or have been relayed to the appraisal district, yes.
Let me finish what I was going to say. I'm getting a lot of complaints from people that meet up with a bureaucracy, when they make phone calls about the new appraisals on their property, what do they call it? The reevaluations?
Reevaluate.
Yeah, the reevaluations. They're making phone calls and they're getting, you know, shifted from one person to another and they're not getting their answers. I got some really, you know, some, I've gotten phone calls, I've gotten people sending me letters. I wish we would look into that because either it's because all the appraisal forms, valuation forms went out recently and all the calls are coming in at one time. Whatever the reason it is, I really think that there's a problem that needs to be addressed by the appraisal district on that issue because, you know, you've got property owners that are legitimately concerned about increases in the valuation and they want answers. They want to know why this is happening and they just, some of them that have been contacting me, they think, they think that since it's called the Cameron County Appraisal District and it's Cameron County and I keep telling them it's an independent board, we just have one representative on that board and we don't have any control over what they do, but they just don't understand that. And so I would just ask you to talk to the director there and just, you know, see what's going on, whether this is just a product of the fact that all these appraisals have gone out right now, evaluations have gone out, or is there a problem in responding to that because I got some nasty letters.
All the concerns or complaints that my office has received have been, we do make daily calls to the appraisal district to take care of these particular problems or concerns, but I can have the
Just tell them that it was raised and we just need to make sure
Yes, yes, it's been raised by my office, Judge, also.
Okay. I'm glad I'm not the only one.
I think we're all getting
Oh, we're getting all bombarded. And all this is going to do is give them more ammunition to go find them quicker.
Wow.
You know? And I would hope that, you know, you requested this from engineering, right?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I don't want the engineering department to come to us to ask for more personnel because they're taking more time to do an extra step in something that they hadn't been doing before, because this will require more work of someone that issues permits. As it is, there's been some complaints about how timely permits are issued to people. So I want to make sure that this does not delay the issuance of a permit in any way, shape, or form. The way this is worded, you know, it's worded to ensure the collection of all ad valorem taxes. Legal research did, there is no statutory law that allows this. We cannot enforce
But what he's, what he's saying is this, and I think, this is where I agree with Tony, is that if we issue a building permit to someone that's going to add to their building or to their house or whatever, that's going to increase the value of that property, then that information is immediately now come to the attention of the county, right? Because we now know that. And so, and that building permit requires our inspector to go out there and look at the construction. So now automatically, that change has affected possibly the value of that property in terms of the ability, of what the Cameron County Appraisal District has in the evaluation. And then that information then is then sent to the taxing authorities and taxing authorities then calculate their tax based upon that valuation. So it doesn't make any sense if we're not, if we know that there's been an increase in valuation for us to inform the appraisal district and force the appraisal district to find out that information when they go out there and do the appraisals, when we already have that information. I think that's where they're headed.
I think it was just the wording.
I don't know that there's anything improper about that.
The wording is not necessarily really the intended goal. It's actually to save time and avoid confusion of property identity. And lots of times, just when a taxpayer brings his tax statement with him when he gets a building permit, it avoids a lot of confusion. It really does. It saves
Well, every permit that is issued from our permitting department automatically gets sent to the appraisal district.
So they have that information.
They have that information.
They have that information.
Every single permit that is issued goes to them.
What they don't have is the tax accountant.
They want us to look up the number for them instead of them looking it up. Do they have viewing privileges to your system at the appraisal district office?
Well, yes, we do.
Why can't they look it up?
Well, they have their
Because they're too busy raising your appraisals.
They have their council.
Okay.
Count numbers on their own.
You know, I mean
So what difference does it make?
It just, it just makes
It gives us
We're acting as, we're acting as police for something that we have no reason to be policing.
Well, the whole idea is working together.
Well, we collect taxes for
Everybody.
Of governmental authorities, I mean, and so
How much work would this, what additional burden would this give you, Pete? I would think.
I mean, everything's electronic, which really shouldn't take a lot of time.
Looking it up.
Right. Couple of minutes.
The discrepancy I see is the wording.
Yeah, the wording.
And the agenda items stop short of what the agenda request form has.
Right.
And we're eliminating a portion of what the agenda request form
Commissioner, since I prepare the agenda, the item before the Commissioner's report is the viewing only. The, whether the tax office or the construction department has the legal authority to withhold building taxes based on that is legislated. And it wouldn't matter what action the Commissioner's report took. So I just took it that it was viewing only and didn't add the other language because how they use the information
We all agree.
We don't always put the total language on the agenda that's on these request forms to start with, but when we add, it's usually what's on the request forms in total. And I just want to be sure that's not what we're doing today.
We're following the agenda.
This is one thing and this is another thing.
We're following the agenda.
The clerk only uses what's on the agenda as the basis of the action that the court takes.
Then we need to be looking at what we're putting on the agenda because not always is it the same.
Well, and I think
Sure, and because of the, there's obvious reasons for that.
And I think what Remi's saying is, we're only approving him, allowing him to view it and after that, it's within whatever the law allows him.
Which means that we're following what the agenda is saying.
That's right.
That's the action, the action report. You can word the item any way, I mean, the motion any way you'd like.
Well, this is to ensure the collection of ad valorem taxes.
But we're not following that.
Well, then why put this in the package?
Well, ignore it.
Okay.
We'll go with the agenda.
Your motion on number 11.
So who?
Motion by Commissioner Tamayo. There's a second to that motion. I'll second the motion.
Based on what's on the agenda.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing along, like I said, aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Right. Motion does not carry a tie vote. Item, consent items 12 through 26.
Commissioners and Judge, on items 12 and 13, Pete Sepulveda needs 12 to be inspection services at all the bridges and not just the Veterans Bridge. Do you consider that? And then on 13
Well, can you do that?
Yes, because you've got notice that what we're looking at doing is engineering services for inspection at the Veterans Bridge, so he can ask to include the other because that gets general notice.
What are you going to do with this sign?
The order also says just Veterans Bridge.
I'll have to change that order.
Okay.
And on 13?
And on 13, what he would like is just for engineering services for environmental assessment and materials testing for an evergreen contract. And I would have to change that order as well.
So that's just Veterans Bridge also, right?
Right.
But if
He wants it in general for all the bridges as well.
Well, 113 is not
It's not for the bridges, it's
Oh, then we need to do that one over again.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that one over again.
I think we need
So if you would just table 13 and then, but allow 12 and I'll make the change on the order.
All right. Any other questions?
16, 17, and 18. Okay, let's go. Have we looked at, I mean, I've looked at
The signs.
Like where? Oh. Anyone have any problem with the signs, the way they're appearing that they would be?
Do you have a problem with that?
I think we had some emails in regards to that a number of occasions.
That may be one of these signs are changed and I just want to
Have you yet?
Bring their attention. Bring their attention.
Yes, what happened is the concessionaire did not, he didn't follow the, apply for the sign.
My sign and the change.
So he asked him to move it and to follow proper procedures and file an application. So he changed his whole, the whole concept.
The whole scenario, right, okay.
I think we're, so we're all right with the new sign?
Are you, are you, have you had any, well, you had any more calls on that?
Not since they were changed.
I mean, we, we've taken them down, or the concessionaire's taken them down.
These don't appear to have any offensive innuendos in them. The way I'm looking at it, but.
It's a matter of opinion. It's a matter of opinion. And I guarantee you, we're gonna give more calls on that the way they're presented to them now.
Okay, so this is what it's gonna be, the one that's here?
Yes.
We have them.
I, I got a problem with that.
You know, I mean, we're gonna have calls on it.
Yeah, that's for sure.
I have a problem with it. I, I really think it's just pushing us too far. So my, 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 my request is to table to all 16.
Oh, three.
16, 17, 18, and have them give us something more appropriate for a family beach.
I mean, we've been, have you, you need to take care of that before it gets to our agenda.
I didn't see any, I didn't see any issues with it. I mean, I.
Yeah, but you know, you got the emails, remember?
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
I've got a copy of it.
We were all copied on that.
Everybody has.
I thought they had changed it from what was proposed.
Well, no, what it was is, is the.
It was much more offensive.
Well, he had the hot dog, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Wrong.
It has to go with the details, but.
Table.
The name's really not.
But now it's just two dogs in a.
Table 16, 17, 18.
Table, yeah. It would be better if they changed the name of it.
Is that, that's what you.
Yes, we would approve, we would not, we will not approve that name for a concession in the county, all right?
Judging Commissioners, on, on item 21, I recommend the changes to that contract in Marcelino presented to the company and they made the changes.
Okay.
On 21.
So that's okay.
21.
Do we approve it?
So I would, I would recommend it.
Yes, okay.
So 16, 17, and 18 are table?
Table.
All right. Any other questions, concerns, comments, complaints?
And table 13.
Huh?
13.
Table 13. All right, there are motions to approve items 12 through 15 and 19, uh, I'm sorry, 12 through, 12, 14, 15, and then items 19 through 26.
So.
Just going to include the, the sub, the.
And the consent?
Item, the other consent.
The other consent.
And then the consent item, the other consent item, which is the item on the purchase of the truck.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, my motion includes that.
All right. Second, any further discussion? And then to table, as part of that motion, table items.
13.
13, 16, 17, 18.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal off by sitting down.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Is that it?
No.
Eight, two, four, five, six.
Two, four, five, and six.
Two, four, five, and six.
And item number two, mid-year review.
I'm gonna have to excuse myself. Okay. As much as I hate to not be here for the, this one, because I had some questions.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, I have one question though. We're gonna be talking about the financial report?
No.
No, the audit committee needs to be, the audit committee needs to present that report.
Okay, when will that happen?
I have to hear your chairman of the, I think Ramy is on your audit committee, if I'm correct.
He says that they're waiting for some last minute information to put it together. Hopefully with the next couple of weeks.
And I'll visit with you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr.?
Judging Commissioners, including your packets was some summary sheets on, on the department's totals, the, and the department totals were based as of April 30th. And that is because a lot of the expenditures from March are actually hitting in April, but the, the salaries are there. So the percentages, if they're between 50 and 60 percent, are usually normal. But, but even at that, there's, there's some departments that are running kind of high. On some of them, the encumbrances, maybe because of contracts, because that's for the whole year, so that kind of skews out a little bit. But the attached sheets behind that are some of the items that are actually causing some of the problems or some of the concerns that, that are out there right now, which haven't been too different from, from the past couple of years, which is the gasoline, which is the same, even though we've increased the, the budget overall on the general fund by over a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars from last year to this year to fuel, because the cost of fuel is continually to rise, hovering close to $3 a gallon. It's pulling a strain and of course mainly on the law enforcement departments, which is the same issue that we had last year. Like this year, electricity is, is running a lot higher than it, than it was before. And, and part of that has to do with P U B, increased the rates in, in August or September of, of last year. So the larger buildings that we have, which would be this complex, the jail, the sheriff's office, those utility rates are running extremely high. And I've met with Marcelino and trying to see what we can do as far as making sure that the air conditioners are shut off at nights or weekends if there's not people working. The jail, of course, is 24 hours. All of the facilities, actually the jail facilities are 24/7, so they have to run and they have people in there. So we're working on that and trying to, and that's what part of his other item is, is earlier was to try and bring someone in to see about getting the, the control system updated and see if we can get control of the facilities to try and keep the utilities down. One of the items that's running real high this year that we hadn't had problems before, but is kind of indirectly tied or directly tied to the fuel, is, is office supplies. A lot of departments are running extremely high. Some of them have run out of funds for their office supplies. And part of that is some of the, the, the costs have gone up and part of the cost factor is fuel charges and delivery charges that have increased. Of course, part of it may be some of the departments decided to order all their supplies upfront and that way they don't have to worry about it for the end of the year. But I have been gotten, been receiving some calls from some of the departments where we're running out of money and we still have so many more months to go. And if there was anything or any funds that are gonna be available to, to help out, and it's, it's mainly the larger departments, which goes through a lot of paper, which costs to go up, toners, and that type of things, not, you know, pens or papers or that kind of thing. So, some of the, on page seven, there's some departments that are, some items that are running extremely high, which in child protective services, the court costs, and this was as of April 30th, had already spent 92 percent of, of the budget. And based on the, the activities in that, in that court, my estimate would be that they're gonna be $150,000 short at the end of this fiscal year.
What court is this?
Child protective services. And that's, you know, for the attorneys that are appointed to the children and the court costs associated with that, that court is handled here. And the activity is, over the past three or four years, that activity has continued to increase and increase. And there was changes that, that were implemented a, a couple of years ago, where they implemented an individual attorney to each individual child, whereas before it was all the children had one attorney. So that increased the costs.
You say all the children, you're saying all the children in the family or all the children in the court?
In the family that are, that are as part of this, whatever case may be before the court, yeah.
If you've got a family with four kids.
Yeah, four attorneys, yes.
That's what I'm asking.
In the same family?
And it's, yes, in the same family. And it's not that they're.
Why are they doing that?
From my understanding is that's the, the regulation or the law was changed like three years ago. Plus.
Unfunded mandates.
Yeah, plus there is an increase in activity. I mean, working up here, you can see during the week.
We're not talking about the increase in activity, we're talking about changes.
Well, it's both, because it's, it's a combination of both, because if there's more cases coming through, of course, they're having to point more.
Yeah, but if it's still, you know, if we're still just one.
Right, for a family.
All the kids in the family, it'd still be a lot less than.
Correct. And, and the fees aren't, I mean, you're talking about a hundred dollars, you know, a case, $200, something like that. That's all the, the attorneys get.
Per attorney.
For attorney. So it's just the, the volume is, is tremendous. There also has been an increase over the past couple of years in, for, a court cost for mental hearings for individuals that are sent from here to, to Bear County for, I guess, mental competency hearings. They're sent there. So there's been an increase in that activity and we have to pay those court costs to, to Bear County. Your original budget that I had set up was, was 15,000. They had already incurred $25,000 and there were still invoices that were coming from Bear County. So I was estimating for the year end, another $20,000 on top of the, of the, the $10,000 that they were already short. Indigent burials and autopsies had gone through 71 percent of their budget as of April 30th. 60 percent of, of that, of those expenditures, because they're gone together, is for bear, burials. The other 40 percent is for, for autopsies that are performed, excuse me. So on the, on the activity that they're, that they've been running, I was estimating another $100,000 probably that they would, they would need through the end of the fiscal year. One juvenile probation spoke to me, Mr. Ramirez, in reference to their placement funds for the housing, or secure placement, where they send juveniles to other facilities in the state. They had already gone through the funds that had been budgeted for them. The rest of the budget is running kind of tight. So he had asked, it hasn't been a formal request going, I, I don't believe, through the juvenile board and then coming to the county asking for additional funds, but.
What about, what's, I mean, I know that we have leased some beds out in the past. What's going on there?
The beds, if I'm not mistaken, was for, for females, where they have a female population. And that's where they had some vacancies. There wasn't.
They're only using the female beds?
I believe so. So they, they were asking for, I guess, they will be asking for additional funds or consideration for additional funds. They're also working through grants and trying to, to find funds within their budget to, to accommodate these, these placements. But they are out of funds at this, at present time. I believe a couple of weeks ago, I, I did submit a budget amendment on the unemployment insurance reserve, which has been covered from, from lapsed salaries, but it was a deficit of $104,000 at that, at that time. So that has been covered. The bus grant match is also something that the court has committed to, which in September, I believe it, it should be due. The, the contract for livestock, that's already been taken care of. And of the Cameron County Historical Committee is become very active this year and has gone through their, the budget. And so they, they submitted a letter in requesting actually additional funds for, to give you operations. So I am requesting, the, the next page is actually for, for Roden Bridge, which is, is doing normal, other than of course, the, the road material budget, which has been exhausted. We already allocated fund balance a few months ago. I believe that there was nothing remaining in that particular line item. The, the revenues, Mr. Yates will present, but in, in reference to these, the shortages that, that I'm projecting through the end of the fiscal year, I, I would like to ask the court that we dedicate any, any, you know, future or incurred lapse salaries or lapse fringe benefits in order to, to make sure we can, we can cover these items. And that's mainly the electricity, the fuel.
In other words, don't spend them on other stuff.
Correct. I am utilizing the lapse salaries that are generated within the jail to, for jail operations. You'll see those periodically to cover, because they do have vacancies, they need the overtime in order to make sure they have the ratio covered. So I'm covering their overtime with, with that. But, but the rest, yeah, I'd like to dedicate or to hold onto this to make sure that we can cover these individual line items.
Javier, you highlighted some of the items, but as I look through the whole list, I mean, there's, there's some departments that are way over.
Correct.
100 percent. So how is our smart going to address that?
Yeah, on a pick, on a particular items like the office supplies or with.
No, just like, I'll just pick one here, that's 176 percent.
Just the piece technology.
Technology.
Okay, on, on that one, that, that particular budget is, is kind of a combination. That one, initially, we thought we were through with, with, with that project. And so I utilized that account number for, for the mental hearings, because there's different judges that actually send those individuals to Bear County. So last year, when they were submitting the, the invoices back to the county, there was, accounts payable was having a difficult time trying to, they wouldn't denote which judge some of them sent them, so they didn't know who to charge them to. So it, it seemed easier to just charge them all to this one account number, which is the JP type, or generic JP account. So within that, there is the JPs and that's, are the mental hearings, which is, which is over. And then there was also some funds still coming in from the technology project that was started years ago.
I understand the law that set up the ability for the JPs to charge an extra fee for technology. It's fairly restricted on where that money can be spent.
Right.
And I don't think mental health.
No, it's not. It's, it's not. As I mentioned, the, the funds actually don't go there initially. It's funds that was, was being budgeted and transferred there for this particular project. So all the funds that was collected for the technology project were spent on that.
Oh, good.
When I set up the budget this fiscal year, we weren't planning on using that account number for the technology project, because I had assumed, all right, in conversations I had with Mr. Gates, that it was, it was over. So.
Initially it was.
Initially it was over. So I used the account number and it wasn't changed for the mental hearings, but there were still some, I guess, some funds left and some equipment that had to be purchased that was charged there also. But the budget was separate for that, the revenues to those expenditures. It was, it was never spent on, on mental hearings. That was general fund monies that was spent on that.
And some of the others that are very close to 100 percent, but it's office supplies.
Right.
You're, what you're thinking is that they just ordered up front?
Some of them, possibly. I know on some of them that I've spoken to, which, like the, the county clerk and the district clerk.
Yeah.
There, there are some, like where they buy a year's worth of files, because they get a better price buying them that way. But there has been an increase in supplies for paper that is purchased through reproduction, because it, it just has gone up because of the fuel charges that they're adding and the toner, and those things have gone up. So, but I'm, I'm working with them to try and, and keep them afloat within their original budget and still have a, and these are numbers as of.
There's a lot of.
Yeah, has, there was just six months.
If we look at fuel usage, was there just a, a lapse of budgeting fuel for child welfare?
Well, that has kind of changed. And let's see if I can recall, when I spoke to them. Initially, they're traveling a little bit more to where there's, there's children that are placed in foster care, say not, out of the valley. So they have to go to make visits periodically. Before, they would go and take their, their own vehicle and get reimbursed mileage. Because we pay 25 cents, 20 cents a mile, 20 cents a mile, some of those individuals didn't want to take their own car.
I understand.
So they were actually, I believe, renting a car or, and so they were, the county was paying for the fuel, of course, but it's now gets charged on the county card. So instead of getting charged to travel, it gets charged to fuel. And so that's why there was money in travel, but not in fuel.
What vehicle are they using then?
From what I understand, they were, they were renting some, if, they don't, it doesn't happen a lot, but they would rent a vehicle to go and then charge, because they have money allocated to them for travel. So it gets charged there, but the fuel gets charged to fuel, not to travel.
We have our employees who are making to actually have really no direct county supervision over. And I've been for the past year, trying to find a good place for a county supervisor. Mostly child welfare, home economics and home, uh, home economists and, and home visit professionals work directly with state employees.
Correct.
There's really no county agency that monitors their activity. And so that's something that I've been working with the district attorney and several agencies to really find out who in the county would best supervise these pod employees and their work. And that's something that we need to work on.
Javier, explain to me on Roden Bridge, the first line item that you have on page
Yes, the district attorney?
Yeah.
That, that was a position that was created maybe three years ago, that was funded through the bond coventures. the bond forfeitures. Because in order for them, the, the premise was to help them process this through the system, a clerical position was approved within Road and Bridge, because the bond forfeiture money comes back into Road and Bridge. And it was done, I think it's been about three years.
Okay.
I understand what you're talking about.
Okay.
Just looked a little out of place.
Are you finished?
Yes. Turn around to Mr. Gates.
I sent an email to all the commissioners, and I believe the judge gets a copy of it from his assistant. It's pretty self-explanatory. The biggest item in there is inmate revenue from federal housing and federal inmates. Commissioner Wood had presented the question if we went to 300 inmates a day, beginning of, end of, middle of May and forward, how would that affect our budget? And up until the first of May, we were averaging, between January and May, we were averaging anywhere from 480 to 535 federal inmates. And I believe I also sent a specific spreadsheet to the commissioners, looking at that revenue and that, I believe that even if we go to the 300 level of federal inmates for June, July, August, and September, that we will exceed our budgeted revenue for federal inmates by about 800,000. So I think we are relatively safe on that issue. On tax collections, we're at 88 percent. We're about half a percent above last year's collection rate, so I believe that we'll achieve the, the 94 and a half percent level that taxes are expected to come in. I believe that Mr. Sepulveda and Mr. Mendez have provided reports to the commissioners' courts on the enterprise activities. The revenue from the toll bridge is running at, or it's just slightly below what we, we wish it to be. But I believe on whole, based on the general fund revenue coming in, and there's still some more details of revenue that I need to find out, and, and it is in the area of child welfare and grants that we do receive in the general fund, that I believe that we will be about a percent above our county budget of $18,000 and change. I entertain any specific questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Appreciate all the information you've emailed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good knowledge report.
Motion by Commissioner Tomlin, second by Commissioner Wood.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal up by state and I. I'll post motion carries. Minutes, are you all ready on 23?
I am.
23, your motion to approve, motion by Commissioner Tomlin, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal up by state and I. I'll post motion carries. Claims, do you have any additions to the claims? Mark left.
Budget amendments.
Huh?
Budget amendments.
Well, did I skip two again?
Skip four.
Okay, going back, going back. Budget amendment, line item, transfers, and, or salaries skipped. Any questions concerning the government's complaint?
This is, we'll ask if we could add this, because I need to get this budgeting done.
Okay. All right. Okay, do you hear a motion on budget amendments and item number four?
So.
Motion by Commissioner Tomlin, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal up by state and I. I'll post motion carries. Claims.
I've brought a list of claims to the commission's court to add their regular and usual business. I request that they be added.
Motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tomlin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal up by state and I. I'll post motion carries. No, my extension on warrant number 00160882. And I'm submitting an affidavit. Any other, any other items? Your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tomlin, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal up by state and I.